The regular meeting of the Bussaras City Council for January the 16th, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foat.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the January 2nd, 2018 signed and die regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the January 2nd, 2018 signed and die regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. With us this evening, we have Brenda Kreider, who's the Director of the Bussaras Public Library. If you'd like to step to the podium, please. We do need you to state your name and address, if you would.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name's Brenda Kreider-Kayler, and I live at 635 and 1/2 Pleasant View Street, Upper Sandusky, Ohio. I'm here tonight representing the Board of Trustees for the Bussaras Public Library, which is at 200 East Mansfield Street, here in town. And I have with me this evening to present to the City Council a signed resolution for a half mil levy to be placed on the May 8 ballot for the library. Anything else you need?
This will be used exclusively for the library?
Exclusively for the library. To improve the library and provide programming. We're hoping to be able to provide things like mobile hotspots for area residents to check out and have at their homes who don't have internet. And items like that, that we currently can't provide with our budget the way it is, and with the Governor continuing to cut our budget and not knowing what the future looks like. This will help us bring our budget back. Right now, we are currently operating at the same funds that we had in 1998. This will hopefully bring us back up to around what we had in 2000.
So, what the funds you're talking about, the local government funds, and back when Governor Kasich took office the first time, he did not deem it necessary to send all of the local government funds back to the local entities, of which the city was one of those. We lost $300 and some thousand dollars, am I correct? Joyce?
If we look back, it's closer to about $600,000.
And then, the park districts lost money, libraries lost money, there were a lot of entities that were involved in that when the Governor built up his $2 billion rainy day fund that he's sitting on down in Columbus. Yes, I am. But, now, what is the area, the people that will be voting on this, not a detailed one, but the general area?
Well, in 2015, the State Library expanded our boundaries to our actual service area rather than just the city of Bussaras in the past. Prior to that, we are municipal libraries, so we were only held responsible to the city. But our actual service area includes Winford and Crown Crawford School Districts because of the consortium that we have. And in 2015, the State Library expanded our boundaries to include all of Winford School District within Crawford County and a partial of Crown Crawford School District. Because of Gaguen and Crestline Public Libraries, we had to honor some of that area for them as well.
So, all those people that are in our district, then, will be the ones that will be voting on this?
Correct. It will not just be the citizens of Bussaras, it will be the citizens in our service area that will be voting on the issue.
Okay. And this is half of 1 percent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you're expecting it to generate?
$166,000. Just a second, I can give you the exact number here. $166,595.
And that has been, that amount was determined by the county auditor, correct?
Correct.
Based upon the valuations of property in your district?
In the service area, yes.
Anyone with any questions they'd like to ask this evening? Okay, what we will do is, this will go into committee, and the, we act as their agent. They do not have the power, the library does not have the power, to put anything on the ballot. And so, we are there, there's a word for that. What kind of agent are we?
Is it taxing authority?
You're taxing authority agent?
We are the taxing authority for the Bussaras Public Library, despite the fact that we are not, it includes citizens that are not part of the city of Bussaras.
Correct.
It's a weird thing, but it's-
Because we're in the whole library, you guys are considered our taxing authority.
And so, that's why they're coming to us to ask about this. And you have in your packets this evening, you have our sample legislations that we'll be working from, and you also have the information that their Board of Trustees has already created. So, all this will be up for discussion. We need this, then, to be referred to the Finance Committee. I need a motion for that, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to refer the Bussaras Library increase of funding to the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. So, this will be on our agenda, then, for this Thursday evening. We have a deadline that we're looking at for this, is that February the 7th is the last day that this can be given to the Board of Elections. Our meeting is on the 6th. And so, this legislation, we're looking to get out of committee this Thursday. So, if you have questions, or you have anything that you want answered, please get those questions to us in advance, and we can talk about this. It'll be, the meeting will be at 6 o'clock Thursday evening. There'll probably be two speakers ahead of you, and then we will get to you. But, it's Thursday evening at 6 o'clock in this room.
Okay. All right. And who gets the signed resolution? Because the copies you have are not signed. You get it?
Yeah. We will include it with the packets for the committee on Thursday.
Okay.
Just, you enjoy it, to carry.
Yeah. Go pass it on out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have one communication dated January 15, 2018, addressed to the Bussaras City Council and the Council President from Mayor Jeff Reiser regarding the reappointment of Mr. Danny Tyner to the Planning Commission. Dear Council President, Mr. Tyner's current term on the Planning Commission has expired as of December 31st, 2017. I have approached Mr. Tyner about serving another term on the commission, and he has indicated a willingness to do so. We ask you to consider, we ask you to consider the approval of the reappointment of Mr. Tyner to serve another six-year term on the city planning commission. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Reiser, Chairman of Planning Commission.
Okay, this is all according to our codes, that it's a mayor's appointment, but we have to do an approval on that. So, does anyone have any questions about this, about, I believe you all know Danny Tyner? No, I mean? Okay. So, what we're looking for, then, is a motion to approve this appointment to the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever, to approve the appointment of Mr. Danny Tyner to the Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Mr. Tyner gets another six years of this. And I, and he's been a good public servant. He served as, as the Service Safety Director for a while, and he's stayed involved with the city, and we're very blessed to have people like him that are willing to step forward. Okay. Moving on to the standing committee reports. Mr. Foat, you get us started with this, if you would, please.
Yep. Bussaras City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting, Thursday, January 4th, 2018. Meeting started at 6:03 PM and ended at 6:12 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Monica Sack, myself, and Andrew Shaw. Bussaras City Council Joint Regular Meeting was called to order at 6:03 by myself. There was no public participation. Order of committee business was the Bussaras Public Library appointments. Again, there was no public participation thereafter, and-
Oh, you start, now you go to your minutes on the blue sheet. Okay.
Okay. Called to order at 6:03 PM. Bussaras Public Library appointments, council received a letter from Brenda Kreider, Director of the Bussaras Public Library, advising that it has three board members whose terms expire December 31st, 2017. It noted that current board member Pete Maynard wishes to remain on the board, and listed four candidates to fill the other two positions. Gerald Dolan, Donna Moore, Hannah Jacobs, and Carissa Fankhauser. Following a discussion on the candidates' involvement with the library, Wireball made a motion to appoint Dolan and Fankhauser to the Bussaras Public Library Board. Foat recessed the Economic Development Committee meeting at 6:10. To address the personal matter, the committee was reconvened at 6:11. Sack seconded Wireball's motion. Motion Foat passed by voice vote. Foat recessed the Economic Development Committee at 6:12 PM.
Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Okay. Keep going.
Number four, public participation was none. Foat asked for motion to adjourn the joint regular committees. Motion by Wireball, and second by Sack to adjourn at 6:12 PM. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did a lot better that time.
The, pardon me?
I said I did a lot better that time.
We actually have two things that we need to do right here, if we could. You heard of the, their recommendation for those to be appointed to the public, to the Bussaras Public Library Board. We need a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee.
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, Mr. McKeever, second.
So moved.
Mr. Myers? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the appointment of, I've got to find the names here, Gerald Dolan and Carissa Fankhauser to the, and Pete Maynard to the Board of the Library. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. The other thing that we have to refer, referral to the Economic Development Committee while we're doing this, is Mr. Emerson, Ken Emerson, has served the city for many, many years as a council member, and then, once he got off council, he continued to serve on the BZA. But, he's no longer going, feels that he wants to do that any longer, so we need to find someone to take his place on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, we need to refer this, we got to find somebody to take this appointment and put this into economic development, which is where all of our committee assignments go, is into economic development. So, I need a motion to put the BZA referral of a new member into the Economic Development Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That's then in the Economic Development Committee. Traffic Commission, we don't have a report this evening from the Traffic Commission. Does anyone have any traffic questions for the mayor? None? Okay. Moving on. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the committee minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We have a report of city officers. Mayor Reiser.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a very short report tonight, and it concerns the weather, particular snow. It's about 2 degrees outside, and I know we're all getting sick of it, but I think we got around, maybe, Mr. Hilton knows exactly, probably 8 to 10 inches of snow over the last couple of storms combined. Okay, thank you. And, and the second still, in particular, is difficult, because, you know, it started as rain and slush, and it came at, it came out pretty hard. So, our crew, I think, did a fantastic job. I got up Saturday morning and drove around town, and it was, it was really well done. I know there's some areas, we have some new people that are learning some different spots. We have a couple glitches here and there, but did an excellent job. Also, I want to thank the downtown merchants. We're trying to work together now to get a nice plan, so we make the sidewalks and parking spaces relatively accessible, and I think it is a major improvement. Still a few people have to talk to, but one thing I think we do fall down in, is in our neighborhoods. Unfortunately, I know when it's 2 degrees out, no one wants to go out and shovel snow.
No.
I know I don't either, but if we can, we just need to do a little better job. If you keep your sidewalks clean for your neighbors, for the postmen, we want to try to make our city as pedestrian-friendly as possible. And especially in the north side where I live, you know, you have a lot of young people going to school, in that quadrant especially, walking to the high school and middle school, and the sidewalks can be an adventure, and I see kids walking in the street, which I really don't like to see. So, fellow north-enders, let's, let's see if we can pick it up a little bit. If you have an elderly neighbor, they can't, can't shovel, why don't you knock on their door and see if you can do it for them? They may even throw you five bucks, who knows? So, anyway, closing, I want to thank the city workers, do a fantastic job. And better neighbors, make a better Bussaras, Madam President. Did you know that?
I do know.
Okay. Now, one more thing. The Bussaras Travel and Visitors Bureau is looking for, we're putting a calendar together, and you all have a little sheet of paper here with a highlight, they're looking for testimonials from, from members of the community and council members, elected officials. You may be included in the 2018 calendar events. There's no preset format, but if you would give Trish a call, and phone number is 562-0720. Give a testimonial about your community, why people should come here and spend some time and some money. She would love to hear, and you may become famous. Thank you, Madam President.
Any questions for the mayor this evening? I don't know whether that's famous or infamous, but we'll go with it, okay. No questions this evening? Okay, moving on, we have Mr. Wagner with us this evening, the Service Safety Director.
Thank you, Madam President. Just have some referrals. Number one, there are material bids to Service and Planning Committee. Sewer groups 1 and 2 to Plating and Finance. East Mansfield and Wetstone Project, Plating and Finance Committee. Mill and Pave, Plating and Finance. 2018 Airport Project, Service and Finance. The Mill and Pave, we're not have the numbers yet, so, but I just need to get it in. Gas and electric aggregation. The electric aggregation price is .05787 cents per kilowatt, and the gas aggregation price is .468 per cubic foot. The electric is good until May of 2020. The gas price is good until 2000 of December of 18, and then the rate will go to .436 per cubic foot until December of 2020. Now, if you remember, the gas is on a, I'm going to say this right, fixed variable. It never climbed the original contract price. We signed with them like three or four years ago. So, if the market stays down, it will go down a little bit at a time, but it will never go above, and I didn't bring that number with me, but it's slowly on a decline, but we signed an extension to go down to .436 in December. So, please check your bill, watch the phone calls you get, for people trying to get you to change over the phone, because typically those people are going to have a termination fee. Their bill or length of time might be three months, six months, or a year, and then after that, you're going to be on the open market price. And you can probably go out and shop some, but just, just be careful. We got any questions, call up to the office, and we can direct it to the right person to talk to. As most of you are aware, it's cold weather, cold weather. We've had sudden water line breaks so far this year already, and we're not just halfway through January, so hopefully, we hold on there, but understand that as we have a break, it does send out a boil advisory until it's fixed, and then 24 hours later, we can have a lot of tested, and typically, it's okay, so, but hopefully, that slows down, because some guys are tired. Jeff already mentioned about the snow plowing. We do have some new people that are in plowing now, so if you have somewhere that typically we've done it a certain way, and we didn't quite get it correct, please call in, and we'll send them back out, and we'll get it fixed. Good notice, we're thinking about summer already. We are accepting applications for our seasonal summer help at Almoa Park, including the pool for lifeguards. So, if you know anyone, please send them up. I'd like to have people in place, so we're not playing catch-up. It seems like it's what we've been doing the last couple of years. And lastly, should have urine, urine reports by the departments by date of February.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Yes, Mr. Trucca.
Madam President, I have a question. In these water line breaks, are they predominantly in old sections of the, of the older water lines?
Yeah.
And, a follow-up, is there anything in the foreseeable future that we will see that we will start to replace some of these trouble areas that we got right now?
Yeah, as we do our OPWC projects that we do every year, when we split it with OPWC, we try to target, target those areas first. So, I think we had a leak down on Wood Lawn, which that's on our list for this year to get fixed. So, we try to take those areas first, but it's just the luck of the draw, I think, sometimes, but we do try to look at where we've had past leaks. So.
All right. Thanks. Mr. Foat?
Madam President, I just wanted to ask Mr. Wagner, as far as the water line breaks, again, you guys are actually doing things to try and combat that from happening in the future, didn't, I thought, I'd heard one time that we're monitoring the flow, basically, and then having certain individuals maybe leave their water trickle to keep from a water main break?
We've never, we have a few places in town that we know certain residents have a problem with their water line freezing, so we do send them reminders to let that water drip, so we constantly got a flow. But as far as any of the other areas, you know, we don't, we don't do anything special other than send them out notices, but-
Anyone else for the Service Director? Okay, we have a bunch of referrals here this evening, and just a reminder, as we go through these, the first one is the material bids goes to Service Committee and Finance Committee. I need a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
Who is the first? Mr. Wireball? And Mr. McKeever? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Second items are sewer groups 1 and 2 to Plating and Finance Committee. This is part of our EPA project, correct?
Correct. It's Cullen Court, Main Avenue, Hopely, Robin Hood Sherwood, and coming up east-southern in that first block to Hopely.
Okay. So, I need a motion to put those two into Plating and Finance.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The, there will be someone at committee meetings this Thursday evening, and to discuss this, Mr. Branstadter and Laura will be here, right, from Arcadis?
Right.
So, they will be our first two speakers this Thursday to discuss what these projects are going to entail. So, you'll not only be hearing money, but you'll also be hearing exactly what's going to be covered in the projects. Then we have East Mansfield and Wetstone Street goes to Plating and Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Who's the first?
Myers.
Myers? And Sack?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Ms. Sack, to put the East Mansfield Street slash Wetstone to Plating and Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The Mill and Pave to Plating and Finance Committee, as the Service Director said, this is not for this Thursday, but it will be upcoming. And we would do want to remind everyone out there, if you have streets and things that you think need attention, now is the time to call up to City Hall and explain where you are and what area you're seeing is needs, needs attention. There are only so many that we can do, but we do our best to see that we get the areas that, and most need. So, I need a motion for the Mill and Pave Project.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Foat, second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever, to put the Mill and Pave to Plating and Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. And finally, we have the 2018 Airport Project to Service and Finance Committees. I need a motion for this.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca, to put the 2018 Airport Project to Service and Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We will also have speakers this Thursday evening. Kevin DeTrey from the airport, and representative from the-
CMT.
CMT, which is the one that handles our grant work for that, for the airport, for the-
As far as I know, there'll be someone there from CMT.
Okay.
The last I knew.
Okay. They will also be here this Thursday, so to explain what that project's going to entail. Did I have anything else here? I think that takes care of all of them. Okay, moving on, then. Law Director, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't really have any written report, it's new in the year. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll be able to tell you who our new victim's advocate is. The, don't really have any referrals. The one thing that is already in committee, the tower lease contract has been in committee for quite a while now, that's coming up in, in the end of April. So, if we're going to redo that, or whatever we're going to do, we need to get it out the bid soon, so that it can be done. So, that's already in committee, so-
Which committee is that? Is it?
Public Lands and Buildings.
Pardon me?
Public Lands and Buildings.
Public Lands and Buildings, okay. We'll make sure that makes it on the agenda for Thursday evening, then. Okay?
And I think that's it.
Okay, any questions or comments for the Law Director? None? Okay, moving on. Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. I do not have a report this evening, but I do have several referrals. We need an appropriation in the General Fund, Security of Persons and Property, Police Department, Materials and Supplies, in the amount of $1,450. This is the carryover balance of donations that were made last year for Operation Hope that was not included in the 2018 budget. Then we need an appropriation in Police Continuing Professional Education Fund, that's for the Police Department, Materials and Supplies, in the amount of $7,600. These funds were received on January 2nd. It's a reimbursement of the, the education cost the Police Department incurred last year from the Ohio Attorney General's Office. So, it kind of gets recycled. We spend it, they reimburse us, and then we get to spend it again.
Okay.
Then, I would also like to refer the Annual Enterprise Fund reimbursements to the General Fund for calendar year 2017.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Schiffer?
Madam President?
Yes?
I have a presentation I'd like to make.
We do, or you are?
When you, when you allow me to do it, so.
Wait, hold on. While we're discussing this, we do this, okay? So, we have a couple referrals to the Finance Committee for the $1,450 for the carryover balance from Operation Hope, and also the $7,600 for the reimbursement we receive from the Attorney General. This needs to go to the Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. And then I also need a referral to Finance Committee for the Enterprise Fund reimbursements to the General Fund.
So moved.
Mr. Wireball, second, please.
Second.
Mr. Shaw, what's that?
Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Now!
Okay, ready?
Please take center stage down here, okay?
Okay.
I think the auditor needs to get up.
May I have Auditor Schiffer? Please come to center stage, too. We received in the mail a, uh, prestigious award today from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is a certificate of achievement in, for excellence in financial reporting, and presented to the city of Visiter's, but it's really, you're doing the got this for us. And we, we certainly appreciate your, your competence in this job and all that you've done for us. So how many years have you been on there doing that?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. And, have you received this award before?
Yes.
Okay, well, keep up the good work. All right, so there it is. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's always nice when somebody from the state says, "Good job," isn't it? Yes? We appreciate that. We also have the auditor's statement of cash position dated December the thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the auditor's statement of cash position dated December the thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Before you, you also have the treasurer's report for December of twenty seventeen. That's for you to take home with you and review, and we'll, uh, approve it at the next council meeting. Moving on. Uh, Chief is not with us. Neither is the fire chief. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Truca, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is time where we have visitors' input regarding reports of the standing or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? We have no legislation this evening. That doesn't happen very often.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, okay. Uh, the next thing on our, is under old business. You have your list of your committee assignments that you approved last time, and it specifies on here who the chairman is. Uh, each one of you chairman has to pick someone else on your committee to be the one that'll take over if you're not here. So, uh, you need to talk to whoever that is that you're looking to put second in charge, and just notify Todd who it is, so that we can keep track of this. So if we know you're not going to be here, we make sure that they have all the information for the meeting that evening. So, uh, that's homework. Okay? Any other old business this evening? None? Moving on to new business. Uh, we already talked before the meeting about the flower fund donation. Council members and the administration, uh, we keep a little fund where, if anything happens to anybody that, uh, are family members and things, so we can send flowers and that kind of thing. That's all this is. Uh, Wednesday, January the seventeenth, is City Hall Free Clothing Drive-Ins at three P.M. Uh, there are quite a few coats and, uh, sweatshirts and shoes and anything, bats and gloves are downstairs. They're all warm. I, I noticed several people in and out today that were taking advantage of that because, you know, just because it's gonna get warmer again, and it did that before, and then it's gonna get colder again, I'm pretty sure. So if you're in need of any of that, it's in, in there in City Hall. You don't have to go into any office. You don't have to talk to anybody. It's just all laying out there. It's for you to, to take a look at, and if, if you have a need for it, it is yours to take. We want everybody to be safe. Uh, Monday, February the nineteenth is President's Day. Uh, city offices are open on President's Day. Thursday, February the twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, is the Chamber of Commerce twenty eighteen Business and Industry Forecast Breakfast from eight to ten A.M. That's always interesting hearing from, uh, the, some of the major, and not so major employers in city about what's happening with their businesses. Uh, it's always interesting, uh, to be there. We're all here to see, anybody else have any new business? None? Okay. We don't need to excuse anyone. We're all here. Uh, the joint regular committee, committee meeting is this Thursday, starting at six P.M. All referrals from this council committee, and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. Referrals from this evening are...
We have nine referrals. Uh, we have the two appropriations from the auditor. That goes to the finance committee. We have the enterprise fund reimbursements. That's from the auditor to the finance committee. We have the library tax levy proposal. That's, uh, from council to the finance committee. Uh, already in committee is the, uh, proposal for the towers, uh, the vertical real estate contract. Uh, that is in public lands and buildings. That will be on the agenda for, uh, Thursday. From the administration, we have material bids. That goes to service and finance. From the administration, we have the Mill and Page. That goes to plating and finance. That will not be on the agenda for this Thursday. Uh, we have, from the administration, the, uh, presentation on sewer groups one and two. That is plating and finance. We have, from the administration, uh, the two thousand and eighteen airport project to service and finance. That will be a presentation on that. The, um, administration also referred the Wetstone and East Mansfield drain, um, work. That goes to plating and finance. And finally, the, uh, BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment. Uh, that is from council to economic development. That's what we have.
Okay, thank you. The next WBCO radio programs are on February. Police Chief Dave Kepke will be there, and in early March, uh, Rob Ratliff and Gordon Grove will be there. Law Director?
Okay, I'll do that. All right. Thanks, Madam President. At this point in time, I would like to request an executive session of the city council to prepare, to prepare for, conduct or review collective bargaining strategy pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one twenty-one point two-two G four.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I move at this time that the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Visiter's City Administration and the service safety director if available to prepare for, conduct, or review collective bargaining strategy, O R C, section one twenty-one point two-two G four.
Okay, I have a motion at this time that the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Visiter's City Administration and the service safety director if available to prepare for, prefer, to prepare for, conduct or review collective bargaining strategy per O R C, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Foat? Roll call vote, please?
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, we are, uh, recessed into executive session at seven thirty-six P.M. Okay, if you would excuse us, please? Okay, got it. Executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever, to adjourn the executive session. Roll call vote, please?
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. We adjourn the executive session at seven fifty-nine P.M. There is no report. Alls we need now is a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever and second by Mr. Myers?
Everybody.
Everyone, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned at eight o'clock. New record for the year.
Perfect time, right on the dot.